Good evening and welcome to Monday, November the 3rd, 2025 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Dan O'Neil from the United Church of Christ. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God, we gather here today mindful of the responsibilities entrusted to us. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community and for the blessings we share. We ask for your guidance as we deliberate on the matters before us. Grant us wisdom to make sound decisions, discernment to understand the needs of our citizens, and the unity in our purpose. May our actions be guided by your will and the results in the betterment of our city. And we ask all these things in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vaught.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. We do have a quorum, so we shall proceed. If I'm correct, the presentation for the eyesore award will be postponed until the next council meeting, if I'm correct. And that would bring us next to citizens' requests. And the first citizen's request is Naomi Wolfson. All right, Naomi, and please state your name and your address, and then you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Naomi Wolfson. I reside at 3609 Blue Ridge Boulevard here in Independence, 64052. I am here this evening to suggest, in addition to our short-term rental ordinance, which would benefit both our residents and the city. Before I do so, I'd like to give you some background. I moved to Independence six years ago. I purchased my current property October 21st, 2021. The property includes a small house built in 1955 and a main house built in 1960. The city considers the small house an ADU, and my property is owned as a single-family residence. In October of 2021, I reached out to the city's planning department to ask about the process of possibly turning the small house into a short-term rental. I was given the approval to apply, I was told ADUs are acceptable, and I was sent the ordinance and application form. Between October 2021 and October 22, I updated the small house's bathroom from a cinder block shower to something more appealing and functional. I continued to work my full-time job and started renovations on my main house. I then thought to myself, I better try the short-term rental business before I apply for my permit and business license, so that I don't go through the process and it's not something I can personally handle. I launched on Airbnb in late October of 2022. Between then and six months ago, I successfully took part in the city's tax abatement program for the 353 district. I continued to work full-time, and I had 50 reservations on Airbnb and Verbo. Then, all of a sudden, I got an email from the city. You must shut down your Airbnb or apply for a permit. Okay, what's going on? I looked online at the city's short-term rental website, which was linked in the email, and I am sitting there in shock. When did the ordinance change? As a resident of Independence who lives on the property, I have now been disqualified by a lease-tenant resident who is running a short-term rental 470 feet from my property line. I've also been disqualified because ADUs are no longer eligible, even though I didn't build this ADU, it was there. In the past six months, I have asked the head of the Community Development Department, Tom Scannell, multiple questions. First, can I apply for a special-use permit for a bed and breakfast and rent it out of my ADU? No. Can I apply for a variance for my property? No. So, now many of you will be thinking to yourselves, but Naomi, this is your fault. Yes, it is my fault. I should have followed through. But that doesn't mean that there shouldn't be a path for residents created so they can do this and benefit themselves and the city. In preparation for this meeting this evening, I spoke to my immediate neighbors within 185 feet of my property. I asked them two questions. One, did you know that I've been operating a short-term rental for the past three years? And two, do you have any objections if I want to go through the formal process with the city? The responses were as followed. We had no idea you were renting the small house. I'm all for people making money. Go for it. No objections. I don't care what you do on your property. Well, they've always rented that little house. I don't know why you're getting pushback from the city. I also filed a sunshine request with the city to find out if there were any formal complaints against my property and/or any ordinance violations reported. There was nothing. Here's what I'd like to propose to you, council members. Our neighbors in Kansas City, Missouri, also have short-term rental guidelines for both residents and non-residents alike. They have one for residents of Kansas City that I have amended and put in Independence as a city. And it reads the following. Allow residents of Independence where this is their primary residence 270 days of the year, who already have ADUs grandfathered on their property, to rent them out as short-term rentals without regard for the 500-foot density rule. Residents can only use one dwelling on the property to be used as the short-term rental, the main house or ADU, on a permanent basis, as long as they own and reside on the property. Now, I know about the short-term rental guidelines here in Independence, and a lot of the information says that there's a requirement for...
You have one minute, I'm sorry.
...noise monitoring device, which is required for short-term rentals. However, for bed and breakfasts, that is something that is optional but highly recommended. I would also keep this as something that's recommended for people who want to do this and live on the property and reside there. This addition to the current rules would continue to ensure there would not be a negative impact on the character of our neighborhoods, and the other ordinances, guidelines already passed would continue to be followed. The benefits to the city would be twofold. First of all, additional transient tax revenue would be generated and collected, and residents would be supporting and hiring local businesses for services such as handymen, pest control, cleaning professionals, lawn care, and HVAC. Thank you for your time and consideration. I hope we can work together to advance our interest in our city and our residents.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Cannon. And Kelly, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Kelly Cannon, and my address is 17111 East 31st Terrace South here in Independence. I knew that five minutes wasn't going to be enough time to say everything that I would like to have addressed, so my wife has typed out copies of everything I'd like for anybody who's willing to take a look at, and I can pass them out, somebody else can pass them out.
Hand it to Mr. Coover, please, and he can make sure that we all get it.
There you go.
Thank you.
And beyond that, I'm not going to take up anybody's time, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next up is Cody Atkins. Please state your name and address, please. Excuse me, it's Atkinson. Please forgive me, Cody.
Cody Atkinson, 722 West Waldo Avenue. I'm here to speak about the Benton Park item that is on the agenda tonight. My fear is that that park does not include enough inclusive equipment or space for children who have disabilities, may have to use a wheelchair or be on crutches, or potentially have something like a seizure disorder. That playground does not include anything that I can see that would allow them to enjoy it in the way that other children are able to enjoy it. I would at least love to see a swing that is handicap accessible. I understand the size and budget constraints. The park department does a really wonderful job and has done a really wonderful job at a couple other parks on making sure they are inclusive. My fear is that this one does not include that, and I don't want us to be a city that tells kids that they can't play here, they have to go play there. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next one is Wes Epperson. Please state your name and your address, and Mr. Epperson, you have five minutes, please.
Yes, Council, Wes Epperson, 3600 Popular Avenue. That's in southwest Independence. Organizer of the Southwest Independence Community Improvements Committee that's been meeting since 2022. I sent an email today to my contact list regarding the Terrace Crossing Project Number 26018, and this email says, "A large out-of-town developer, Zimmerman Properties, has applied again for a funding grant from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. If funding is granted by the MHDC, Zimmerman Properties will construct a 60-unit, income-adjusted apartment complex at 9701 East 35th Street, the five-acre site of the former Pitcher School." That vacant lot, well, Pitcher School stood for a while empty, and a developer, if I remember correctly, at one time spoke about trying to redevelop that as a senior living facility, but that never happened. The building burned down, it was demolished, and it now has, for years, been a vacant, weed-covered dumping ground. This proposal was made last year and did not get funding, so this project is being proposed again. A lot of us oppose this because the site is located very near to the busy and dangerous 40 Highway. It's also located less than two blocks away from two high-crime motels that have been ordered closed by the City of Independence for just cause. At the present time, the owners are suing the city to reopen. Unfortunately, there's been no commitment by the city to provide the needed infrastructure to provide for the safety of the numerous children that would be expected to move into this large apartment complex if built. There is no commitment by the city to provide sidewalks along the busy 35th Street for the children to walk safely to Castle Park Elementary School out of the roadway. There is no nearby green space for the children to safely play. The Independence School District has refused to endorse this project. I gave the people on my contact list the information to make comments to the MHDC. They can simply state that they don't support the project, or they can reply that they do. So, I would say that at last year's meeting, Zimmerman Properties, they're representative, and there were people there from City Hall, they proposed this same exact project, but a lot of the people there and since then have talked about, we feel that it's lacking the needed infrastructure. 35th Street has no sidewalks at all from the city limits east all the way until you get to Chrisler.
You have one minute, sir.
These, there are no sidewalks now on 35th Street for the Castle Park School that's been open for six years. There's only four blocks of sidewalk on Hardy. The city has just added about another block of sidewalk on 31st Street. There is sidewalk plan for Castle Park with the new bond financing, but until these conditions are met, and we would like to be a part of the process, we don't want to be outsiders. So, we would be glad to work with the city and the developer. We would love to have this property developed. It's an eyesore right now, and it has been for a long time, so please work with us. We want to be partners. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull anything for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I would like to pull Item 25-797.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on one second. 25797, that was the resolution number one. Thank you very much. Councilmember Vaught.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I would like to pull number two.
And that is the item for 102,000, is that correct? Or 106,000, 102,000?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wiley. Any other items like to be pulled for separate consideration? Going once, going twice, all right. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda, and we'll talk about those two separate items in a second.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved, six in favor, zero opposed, and Councilmember Vaught asked first, so I will go to Resolution 25797. Councilmember Vaught, the floor is yours.
I move to approve Resolution 25-797.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion for 25797. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second for 25797. Councilmember Vaught, the floor is yours. Please proceed.
So, I'd like to make, I move to make an amendment to the resolution by replacing the word "shall" with "may" in Section 2.
Okay. And just for clarity, help me understand that...
So, this was, this was brought up at the study session. Councilmember Fears was worried about all the boards and commissions with the word "shall" having to have their meetings at the commons. So, I think this small word change gives a little bit more flexibility while keeping the intent of the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Any other further discussion?
I'm going to second that, it needs a second, right?
Okay. So, you're seconding the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second for the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment changing it in Section 2 from "shall" to "may."
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the amendment as proposed passes six in favor, zero opposed, and that brings us back to the main item. Any further discussion on the main resolution?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Well, I understand the intent and the goals of this particular item. I, and I appreciate the amendment, which does help address the concerns that I raised back in the study session, but when we approved the purchase of the municipal commons, we did so with this resolution in place, which called us to retain a presence on the square and, and to, and the reason that we did that is we wanted some more presence, more ability to handle some city business towards the west side of town. And so, that's what my decision to vote on the Independence Municipal Commons was based on, and as such, I'm not going to be able to support this item, so...
Thank you. Anyone else for the discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Madam City Manager, refresh my memory, how much did we spend on the building on Jackson? It's going to be the new City Hall.
The total project cost is 21 and a half million. Roughly 9, 9.1, 9.2 was the purchase of the building and the land, and then the rest, the rehab of the facility.
Okay. I know we took another $20 million on, how much money have we spent so far?
We're making biannual payments on the building. So far, we're, let's see, we're making roughly 1.6 million a year, and we've been paying on it. We'll make the second year's payment this year, so 3.2.
Okay. And I guess, was there a plan in place when we purchased the building, where city, where we were going to do city council meetings?
There was no designated plan at the time, no.
Okay. So, I voted no on that building, as a lot of people know. I don't regret my vote. In fact, if it came up again, I would still vote no, because I didn't feel like, for one, there was a lack of planning, and I still don't feel like we really do have a plan if we don't, if we don't move city council meetings there. But I'm going to be voting yes on this resolution, because this is the hand we were dealt, you know? Where are we going to do city council meetings if we don't do them there? And if we do them anywhere else, it's going to cost us. I mean, we're already over $20 million. I mean, why are we going to spend any money anywhere else, and we have a perfectly good building down there? I know you have had some designs drawn up. How many, how much seating would be down there?
So, the current plan, we're working on seats roughly 150 to 160 people.
Okay, is that in the chambers itself, or is that, does that include overflow as well?
That's just in the chamber itself.
Okay, that's just in the chamber itself.
Yes, we'd have an additional 100-plus seating in an overflow conference room.
So, kind of like the conference room out there, but that doesn't really hold 100 people, right?
No, it's much larger than Conference Room D is today.
Okay. Okay, so I'll be supporting this, just for the... Okay, so I'll be supporting this, just for the financial aspect. And the reason I ask about the money, because I'll, my, if it was up to me, and I thought we could get our money back, I would just say put the building up for sale, because, you know, I was against it anyway. But there's no way we're going to, I mean, I think the building sat for three years before we even bought it, is that correct?
It had been sitting for some time. I don't remember exactly how long. I'd hate to quote a timetable.
I mean, there's no way we would sell the building and get anywhere near what we've invested in it. So I'll be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Anyone else have further discussion?
Just for clarity, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Interim City Manager, we looked at other city-owned buildings. We took a tour of the Truman Memorial Building, which is a beautiful kind of auditorium space. It didn't seem to fully fit our needs, in part just because it has multiple entrances and exits, and so for safety reason, that was one of the reasons that we ruled that building out, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have other further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
No. The motion passes four in favor, two opposed. And that brings us to item number two. Councilmember Wiley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move that we postpone this item to the November seventeenth meeting. I have some questions that I'd like to work on for the next week or so.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Very good. We've got a motion and a second to postpone item number two. Any further discussion on the postponement?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Question for the city manager?
Please proceed.
Would postponing this cause us any problems?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number two? All right. We've got a motion to postpone item number two. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number two passes six in favor, zero opposed to postpone item number two to the next council meeting. That brings us to our ordinances. And ordinance number twenty-five, zero-nine-seven. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-nine-seven, second reading, an ordinance approving a petition to add property to the Nolan Road Community Improvement District, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five, zero-nine-seven? Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five, zero-nine-seven.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
No. The motion passes twenty, twenty-five, zero-nine-seven passes five in favor, one opposed. That brings us to twenty-five, zero-nine-eight. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-nine-eight, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant in the amount of eight thousand dollars from the Missouri Department of Transportation for reimbursement of overtime for the Police Department for Work Zone Enforcement from July one, twenty-twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, authorizing future change orders and/or time extensions for the same project and making the necessary appropriations, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five, zero-nine-eight? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five, zero-nine-eight passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five, zero-nine-nine. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero-nine-nine, second reading, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget, which was approved by ordinance number one-nine-six-eight-two, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five, zero-nine-nine? Madam City Clerk, just for the sake of those watching, could you just give us a quick summary of the major items on this one? Please, Assistant City Manager, please forgive me.
Actually, I would like to ask Melissa Cabrera, our Finance Director, to come forward, and while she's making her way forward, this is a routine cleanup item that we do for changes from where we differ from the budget to our actual expenses.
Sounds good.
Or Alex Morgan, our Budget Manager.
So Alice Morgan, the Budget Manager, will come forward. So Alice, thank you very much.
Alex.
Alex, please forgive me, Alex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to provide a quick summary, so this is an ordinance that we do to clean up items as they're coming in for this new fiscal year. So just to give you a little highlight, predominantly what is on this ordinance is appropriation of grant funds that we didn't know at the time when we did the budget, so that just makes sure those funds are available for spending. Other things, we have several items related to the Police Department with expenditures that they have, and we're appropriating that from fund balance and a few other places to take care of some equipment needs that were not budgeted for, but we do have the funds available now. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to go into any of the individual items in detail, but that's a general overview.
Yeah. That's all I want, is a general overview. Anyone else have other questions? Alex, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for twenty-five, zero-nine-nine.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five, zero-nine-nine passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five, one-hundred. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash one-zero-zero, second reading, an ordinance amending Article fifteen of Chapter Four Rental Ready Program to amend the effective date of the licensing requirement for utility turn-on, second reading.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item? Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor? Madam Interim City Manager, I guess the question I would have on this is, can you just, my understanding is that we're just needing to delay this in order to have a little more time to, to implement the plan that we had, right?
Correct. We need to do some additional system testing, and that's just taking longer than initially anticipated, so we want to get it right going out the door, so that's the reason for the delay.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-five, one-hundred, please.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five, one-hundred passes six in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to twenty-five, one-zero-one. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash one-zero-one, second reading, an ordinance amending Independence City Code, Section five point zero-one point zero-zero-two, definitions related to businesses, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five, one-zero-one? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five, one-zero-one passes six in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to twenty-five, one-zero-two. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-five dash one-zero-two, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a certain grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission as part of the Twenty-third Street, M-seventy-eight Complete Streets Phase Three Project, project number one-one-two-one-one-one dash three slash federal project number CRP-three-three-seven-nine-four-four-seven, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five, one-zero-two?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, could you please just outline what is happening in this area? It's, it's one of the areas that I get the most sort of concerns, suggestions, complaints about, and what will this address?
So this project, we're actually, as staff, very excited about. It adds some desperately needed sidewalks along the Twenty-third Street corridor. This specific section is from Speck, is on Twenty-third between Speck and Jackson Drive. No infrastructure there today, so this will provide pedestrian signal improvements, ADA compliant sidewalks and signaling, and sidewalk infrastructure, or multi-use path infrastructure.
So it doesn't do any road resurfacing? It's just really on the pedestrian side? And I know we've had a number of close calls there and some pedestrian accidents, so that's a well-deserved area for improvement, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
And just for the benefit of everyone, so this covers that area that's stretched in front of the middle school campus, correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion on twenty-five, one-zero-two? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five, one-zero-two passes six in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to twenty-five, one-oh-three. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash one-zero-three, first reading, an ordinance amending, ordinance number seven-seven-five-five, and ordinance number one-eight-nine-two-four concerning membership criteria for the Independence Square Advisory Board, first reading. Twenty-five dash one-zero-four, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a grant for one thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars from the Eileen-Normeal Weir Community Impact Grant for Parks and Recreation Department, first reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five, oh, excuse me, first reading? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Twenty-five dash one-zero-five, first reading, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring utility easements for the Cracker Net Creek Bank Stabilization Project, project number three-zero-two-two-zero-two, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project, first reading. Twenty-five dash one-zero-six, first reading, an ordinance amending Article six of Chapter eight and Article four of Chapter twenty of the Independence City Code pertaining to the adoption of a revised procurement policy, first reading.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Councilmember Comments. And Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vaught?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that, like, so I know there's concern about food right now, and I just wanted to share that the Community Services League has expanded their drive-up food pantry at the Nolan Road location to better serve families in need, and we are so fortunate to have them in our community. They offer so many services to Independence. So if you or someone you know are in need of assistance, go to their website, CSLcares.org, and you can sign up to receive, you can sign up to drive-through and receive some benefits there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wiley, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things tonight. Last week, I attended the monthly meeting of the Independence Housing Authority Board, was able to listen to them talk about a wide range of topics, including how the federal government shutdown has affected them and their ability to communicate with federal HUD, their ongoing sewer stack repairs at Pleasant Heights, and their future plans to demolish and rebuild at Hocker Heights to create additional housing opportunities. I also met with the tenants of Independence Towers on Saturday, and I think most people know they formed their own union last summer. They are now advocating for tenants across eastern Jackson County who have faced similar unhealthening living conditions to what they experienced. The group also shared updates on the repairs that are being made now by the building's new ownership, and so far, the relationship between tenants and ownership has started off well and is positive, so I'm going to cross my fingers that that, that stays positive. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things to bring to your attention. First, at the end of the agenda is always the section that's titled "Information Only." I hope you'll take a minute to read the SGR proposal. This is the group that we have hired to do our city manager search, so we are in the process of moving forward with that. Their next steps will be to take a look at the job description and make sure that that continues to support what it is that we would like in a city manager. We've provided them with a number of documents. They will be on-site to visit with staff. They have some mechanisms for public engagement, which I'm looking forward to, and the full council will be part of interviewing future city manager candidates and making that decision. So I just want to continue to keep you apprised as we move along on that. We had a wonderful Halloween parade put on by the Chamber. It was a ton of fun. If you were there, I hope you got to engage with your neighbors and pass out some candy and see some real creativity in Independence. Special thanks to fire, to police, to AMR, to Ted's Trash, to everybody who showed up and made it a wonderful event. The Innovation Center celebrated fifteen years. The Innovation Center is a, an incubator for young businesses. We have had almost six hundred young businesses come through the Innovation Center. A number of those have graduated to become really some sophisticated organizations, certainly Novus is one example. They have outgrown the space they grew into and are growing into the next one. They provide scientific timing devices that are now on every continent in the world. So just, you would not think these things are growing out of little Independence, but some fantastic things coming out of the Innovation Center. I had a terrific ride along with Officer Blair Parker. I just want to give my appreciation to the IPD for making that possible, and if you will pass on my thanks to Officer Parker. We are still waiting on some final decisions on City Seven. I've raised this a couple of times now. We have fewer and fewer people who are watching on that channel. Many people have already migrated over to YouTube, so they can watch it whenever it's convenient for them, but the cost is the same, and we have some replacement tech needs that mean we have some hard conversations to have, so I'll hope that we can have an update on that at a study session in the near future, because we're going to need to help people transition over. Okay, thank you. My last item is that you may have paid attention to the news and saw that former Mayor Weir's house got hit by a truck. I want to give a heartfelt thanks from former Mayor Weir to the IPD, to fire, to AMR, who came to their rescue at four o'clock in the morning when a truck came through their bedroom. We are wishing a speedy recovery for Mayor Weir's husband, Tom, who's been hospitalized with some significant injuries. But I also want to let you know that they apprehended the driver, who is a resident of Grain Valley. That person is under arrest, and I just appreciate the prosecutor bringing rapid charges and moving that along. So a lot to be thankful for, that the injuries weren't worse, and that the city came together to do what was needed to take care of that family. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Just got a couple of things. One of the things is Lori Harp put together last Wednesday a function recognizing all of the nonprofits in the City of Independence here in Independence, and just did a great job. And it was just great to hear all the work the nonprofits are doing for our city, and they do us do an extraordinary, extraordinary job. Also, for the animal shelter, please come out and volunteer, walk the dogs.